Amber Penas Bakary, thank you for that suggestion. We'll go on to B, report from Department of Personnel Management.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Congratulations, your first meeting and congratulations that everything's moving along. If you have, I want to just give a little bit of background. The request on the agenda is requesting for the HR classification and pay manager regarding the salary process for police officers, criminal investigations, first responders, et cetera. I want to acknowledge our team that's online right now, I believe, or in person there. Ray Seda, who works with our, our classification, and Thomas Seda, who is our director. We also have Deputy Brown, who is on the call listening. Additionally, our colleague, Director Anderson, I believe is there in person. Together, we, we are coming forward to just provide some, an update, I think, from my part, and then we'll have a brief kind of transition to, to hear a little bit more from the personnel who take care of classification. So just to kind of give you an idea, I know that there have been many committee meetings where we've been providing an update from the Niggrin-Montoya administration. And just, just want to let everyone know that we are continuing to work at the division to assess and check the status in all of these areas when it comes to salary, when it comes to Personnel Office of Background. And, and I believe there's a long list, including Personnel, the Personnel Policy Manual. So as we go forward, I was, it was brought to my attention when we came on board that there were a lot of questions regarding salary and where, where everyone stood, not just public safety, but everyone in general. There's been commitments from the Niggrin-Montoya administration to proceed with research and decisions that are leading up to, to increases in salary. So our personnel are charged with looking at that specifically. And it looks like in the prior administration, there were some attempts to collect information and data and finding ways to apply that to positions across the board. A lot of information was shared with me from our personnel about how and how, how everyone would fall into place when it comes to across the nation, not only with our personnel when it comes to salary increases as a government employee, but our, our, our businesses off the, outside the government. So if that's grocery stores, gas stations, and then also the small business owners throughout the nation. So there's been discussion in this area. But more specifically, you know, we looked at all of the challenges that we even inherited from the prior administration. There are a number of issues that have been outstanding, not just for months during the transition, but prior, you know, probably a number of years, I'd like to say. So we have been sitting there outlining and looking and making sure that we include all of these items, these, in, in turning them into action items. One of the ways that we are doing that right now with the Division of Human Resources is we've created a task force in partnership with Social Services through our Oversight Committee. And Councilman George Tolff is going to be examining this closer with us. We've also included additional council people. At the table have been Jermaine Symonds and Councilman, um, Lamardo Azuret. And then we've also worked closely with keeping public safety involved at the table. So for, for those who are, haven't been at the table, we started this task force in the beginning of March, and our hard stop date finalizing everything would be Friday, March 31st. So this has been work in progress. We have two work groups, work sessions from, that include a number of individuals at the table from each division, including individuals from Tom Palpero's office and OMB, and making sure that we're being very inclusive. Just the other day, we spoke to Budget and Finance Committee, the Chair, and we've, she's reminded us to ensure that her committee is included. So just to kind of give you an update, this is where we're at. Our personnel are really focused on addressing all of these action items that need to be complete. So with me on the call is Ray Seda, and I really would like to give her a moment to share a few points that she's educated me about, about what has happened in the past. If I can pass it over to Ray Seda, that would be great.
Okay, that's fine.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ray Seda, we can hear you. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you, and good morning, honorable members of the Law and Order Committee. As our Division Director indicated, I am presenting the information regarding the requests for the salary process for commissioned law enforcement officers and the first responders. Okay, the process begins with a request for a pay review that is generally submitted via a position classification questionnaire or a memorandum by the respective department or program. Once we receive that request, our office meets with the program if there is additional information needed or clarification, and then we begin compiling market data regarding the employee compensation programs and which include any wages or salaries and performance pay that is allowable by the Personnel Policies Manual, along with the benefits. The other is that the data that we compile provides information that is a comparison of the amounts being paid on an average in the local area or in similar organizations. In this case, it would be law enforcement organizations. This information is vital in providing a fair and equitable compensation, and is a key pillar to attract and retain the best talent. DPM, in consultation with the program, also reviews the market data that has been compiled, and then we begin to draft a salary schedule to ensure internal equity. And that also includes the alignment of salaries of the current employees to determine the appro, and then also to determine the appropriate pay grade assignments. So there are different types that we've done in this for the law enforcement officers. The other is, once a new salary schedule is developed for implementation, the programs are notified that a budget modification or revision is required to ensure that funding is available to implement the new salary schedule. In addition to the market, the pay review, if there are significant changes to the duties and responsibilities within the respective positions, as they outline on their PCQ that they submit for the pay review, then the class specifications are updated, and also the new pay grade assignments are indicated on the revised class specification. But to implement the new salary schedule, once everything is completed and funding is available, then the Department of Personnel Management works with the programs to implement the changes. One of the first ones we did was for the commissioned law enforcement officers, and this was pursuant to a Council Resolution Number BFO-30-16. Once we received that, the Department of Personnel Management, in coordination with the Division of Public Safety, developed a new salary schedule based on the market data that we, was compiled from other local and regional law enforcement agencies. A new salary schedule AF was finalized and issued for implementation effective on October 1st of 2016. And any salary schedules or any time a GWA is approved for Navajo Nation employees, then the, the Law Enforcement Commission salary schedules are also updated by the same percentage that, of the GWA that was approved. This salary schedule from the beginning was AF, and it's been, that's been 2016, and now in 20, for fiscal year 2023, the new salary schedule is BZ. This salary schedule is utilized by all ranks of the police officer classifications, ranging from the police recruit to the police commanders and the chief of police and deputy chief of police. It is also utilized by all ranks of the criminal investigators and the criminal investigation supervisor, as well as the internal affairs investigators. So that one has been in effect for, since 2016. With the recent approval of the Resolution BFD-49-29, which is relating to the clinical licensed emergency medical employees, which is to put them on the commissioned law enforcement schedule BZ, and to also provide for the FY23 general wage adjustment of 25%. This legislation also included the use of salary schedule BS for the Department of Criminal Investigation civilian staff. Far as the implementation process for the licensed clinical EMS physicians, our department reviewed the proposed pay grade assignment in coordination with the department manager, Mr. Kiskoli. We reviewed the current salary data to ensure internal equity. One of the issues that we normally have when we're transitioning from one salary schedule to another is that we have to look, ensure that we have, we do have equity amongst all the employees in the different classifications. Once that was completed, the grade step assignments were determined for implementation, and all the class specifications had been revised to incorporate the pay grade assignments. For the clinical EMS positions, there were no major changes to the duties and responsibilities of the class specification. So when each of the individuals were hired or employees were hired, they did go through a qualification assessment, so there was no need to conduct qualification assessments for these individuals. The class specifications have been updated and sent for update to our class plan. And we did recently change our website for the Department of Personnel Management. So I noticed that these updates weren't made, so they're in progress right now to ensure that the updated information is available for the program's use. Currently, the implementation is pending approval of a budget revision request that was submitted by the Department of Emergency Medical Service. And once they get approval from OMB, then we'll implement the new schedule. The new schedule, as I mentioned earlier, the grades have been assigned to each of the positions, and this begins with the recently created field operations manager, and these individuals are those that oversee the respective field offices within the five agency offices. It also includes the EMT supervisors, the paramedics, the EMT instructor coordinator, the EMT intermediate position, EMT basic, and the emergency medical responder, as well as the EMT recruit. This information was, a report was forwarded to Department Manager Kiskoli, who accepted the new salary schedule and the grade steps assigned, and these assignments will be, or these salaries will be effective on October 1st of 2022, so it'll be retro back to that date. And moving forward, all new hires and promotions will be in accordance with the Navajo Nation Personnel Policies Manual, Section 4E, which it talks about the appointment rates for newly hired employees, as well as section, or I'm sorry, G under Section 7, 3, which talks about any promotions that may occur as the individuals obtain the required years of experience and the license or certification required at the next level. With respect to the Department of Criminal Investigations civilian staff, we did receive the resolution, as I indicated previously. However, there are, this one includes a three-tier salary adjustment at Step F and Step C on the utilizing the BS salary schedule, which was last year's salary schedule for the commissioned law enforcement officers. There was an attachment that indicated a Step I, and this needs further clarification. So we will be reaching out to the Department of Criminal Investigations to schedule a meeting on how the three tiers, tier of salaries will be addressed. One of the contributing factors to the pay adjustments for the, the civilian staff was the lack of the employee performance appraisal forms for the employees, which impacted the recommendations for performance step increases. The performance appraisal serves as a basis for determining eligibility for step increases. So this is one of the factors that contributed in the continuous pay adjustments for employees, the civilian employees. With respect to the Department of Fire and Rescue Services, they submitted documentation to, for a pay review at the beginning of the, or in May of 2022. And we began compiling market data for their positions, and that information correction, it was submitted in the first part of the year. So the pay grade assignments were completed in June of 2022, which included the revisions to the senior firefighter position. The requirement was that they have, that they now have to have a current EMT basic certification, as well, or an EM, emergency medical responder certification. The implementation of the new pay grade assignments for the various levels of firefighters is pending the completion of qualifications, which is a result of the required certification. The timeline for implementation is critical and requires coordination with the program's management staff, and this has been taking quite some time now. And the last conversation or meeting that I had with Chief Larry Chi was that we were going to start issuing the results of the assessments, which, where a lot of the senior firefighters were deemed not qualified for the position due to a lack of their EMT basic or first responder certification. So that's where we are with respect to the first responder classifications or implementation of new pay grade assignments. I would also like to note that there was, there were revisions made to the ranger classifications under the Department of Resource Enforcement, and their salary schedule, or their salaries, pay grade assignments on the new commissioned law enforcement officer salary schedule were reviewed, and they were issued for update to our class plan and as well as our website. However, the implementation has not begun on that one. We will have another meeting to determine, to review the current salaries for those employees, and then move forward with transitioning them onto the new salary schedule. So that completes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for the report. We, now we'll take a motion to accept the report.
Chair, can I comment? This is Debbie.
Yeah, we do a motion first. We want to make a motion first before we move on to doing any questions and comments at this time?
Sure.
Okay.
I make the motion. Nathan Noda.
Thank you, Honorable Noda. I need a second.
Second by Charles Newton.
Thank you, Chair Charles Newton. All right, we'll do a vote. Did we do that now? All right, so we can go ahead and move on to questions and comments. I think Debbie had a comment, and then we'll move over to Chair Charles Newton for her question.
Thank you so much, Chair. I really want to commend my, my team for doing all of that research and assessing where the updates are and what the status is. I also want to acknowledge our, the unique, you know, personnel that we have in, in, as police officers in public safety, criminal investigations, and as first responders, especially as fire. Being the late wife of a firefighter of 22 years, I understand how important these positions are, and I, I see this as something that we need to work very aggressively with our public safety. A couple of solutions that we're working on right now is the formation of the task force, and this task force breaks down a number of areas in personnel that allows us to address and work collaboratively with all of the divisions. And then also just to recognize that our communications between Division Director Anderson, myself, and our Chief of Staff are, are active and they're happening. So thank you so much for our team working together. If you have.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to Chair Charles Newton for her question.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Perfect. Thank you. My question to Ms. Ray Seda Tadi is, this is a new committee. Can you, can you draft up the steps necessary for an individual to receive a pay raise and what's encompassed in, in making that go forward? Number two is, is there's, there's references made to a survey. During the 24th Navajo Nation Council, we kept requesting for this survey, the survey that was conducted that says that our first responders are making what they should be making, when we are seeing our off reservation first responders not making, I guess, the adequate salary of, of what they could be making off the nation. So if we can get a copy of that survey that says that we, that what they're making is income, I guess, equal to what they would see off the Navajo Nation. So if we can get that survey in writing so that we have a good understanding. And the reason I'm asking for the, the process of what it takes for an individual to receive a pay raise is, we have many of our first responders that do, that do, you know, require a pay raise, however, it, it's, it's really hard for them to just be told that they're going to get a pay raise, or that they're going to get a, a step increase, and then it not happen for several months. And I think that this committee needs to, needs to see that process and, and what, what it requires, so that when our first responders come forward to this committee, that they're, they're able to understand, you know, the process and be able to ask the right questions in terms of what needs to be completed. So if we can get that in writing, again, that would be great. And then my last question is, with the conversations that you've had with Chief Chi and what firefighters are required to do, what I would like to know is, when we require our first responders to, you know, to take the necessary classes, are those classes offered on the Navajo Nation, or are they required, you know, to, to be taken off the Navajo Nation in order to complete the necessary classes or hours needed to attain a certificate, or to get, you know, to get their, their credentials in place in order to receive a pay raise or to receive a step increase? You know, if we can get that information as well, I think that that will help this committee when it comes to issues that we're facing with our first responders getting adequate quick, adequate pay, and also the step increases. Thank you, Vice Chair. Those are my only, my only questions, and they're getting ready to start the meeting. So I'm going to get off the line. I just wanted to ask that question. That's why I'm requesting that they be put in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Charles Newton. We'll go back to Department of Personnel to answer the question.
Thank you for the question, Honorable Charles Newton.
You could be in DC and.
Okay, with reference to the surveys, in most situations, the surveys are the area that took the longest time, because our challenge has been that most organizations that were selected for survey and by completing a form, including the comparable positions within their organizations, were, did not submit information or respond to our requests. So what we had to do in most situations was go online to identify what was being paid in our local and regional areas. But we can. But we can go ahead and provide information. And yes, I, I do understand the reasons for the questions and especially as it, as it relates to the first responders where they are informed that they will be getting a pay increase. However, due to not submitting the required documentation in a timely manner has impacted our processing time. So anytime there are changes to the qualifications and we have to conduct a qualification assessment, it is really critical that our supervisors work hand in hand with their employees to provide all the necessary documentation. Sometimes we receive a large packet of certifications which are not key or relevant to the certifications that are required. And that takes a long time when we're reviewing all of that information. And as far as conversations with the fire chief regarding classes, it is my understanding that they do make allowances for their staff to attend the different trainings or classes that are required in order for one to obtain their certification. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your response. Is there anyone else that has questions?
This is Thomas Seeta Witty, Human Resources Director. Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, day, Benet. She a Thomas Seeta Witty and she a twoswoning, she a dot com baham, she's she and she on a death, she a dead, she a non-tenia, she another. Originally from Steamboat Canyon. And I know that one of the, you know, just to respond to some of the, the comments or the concerns, one of our challenges has always been trying to request for salary, like surveys from different entities. So one of the things that maybe the DPS can do, and they do have surveys that are quite intrusive in terms of compiling all the information and putting it into a, a working document so that organizations can review those. And I think maybe one of the things that, and we've already requested this of one department, is to try to see if that particular department could utilize their funds, funds to try to request for a salary survey for their particular area. So then it, it helps us better review those. And salary surveys are usually, they're quite expensive. But if, if a department can try to purchase that and then have us utilize it, it would be in the best interest. Right now, DPM, we don't have a budget, you know, that, that we could use to fund these things. So we asked the departments if they have the necessary means to do that. It would really speeden up our, our efforts as well as their efforts. So that was one, one avenue. The other part that I also want to mention is that we did submit our report to our Oversight, Health Education, Human Services. So they, they are aware of our efforts to look at salary structure. And so hopefully, you know, that will come down the way. But I just wanted to mention that I can look at some surveys to see what's available for DPS and maybe work with Division Director Manuel and Anderson to see if we can start the process to survey, I mean, to purchase it. So that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
So I have a question. So when you say expensive, how much does that survey usually cost?
They could run, depending on the detail of information that would be inside the survey because they, the surveys can take about a year for them to bind it together and make it a, a resource for those entities. It could go around about a thousand to like $5,000.
Okay.
But they're well worth it. You know, they're well worth the, the information. I will, I'll see what I can find and I'll work with the division directors.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more questions? Any other questions? Any of the honorable delegates online have any questions? All right, none at this time. Thank you for your report. And so we will go to a vote.
Honorable Herman Daniels Jr., how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Herman Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Nathan Nohta, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Nathan Nohta votes green. Honorable Stephen Ariza, how do you vote? Honorable Madam Chair, you can be a Charles Newton, how do you vote?
I vote green. This is Delegate Charles Newton.
Thank you, Honorable Madam Chair, you can be a Charles Newton, votes green. Honorable Stephen Ariza, how do you vote? With the Honorable Vice Chair Cheryl and Yasiya, three favor, zero chance, two not voting. Honorable Vice Chair Cheryl and Yasiya not voting and Honorable Stephen Ariza not voting.
All right, thank you. Let's go back up to Court A. I think is Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi online to give her report. She's on. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi, are you ready to give your report? I hear something. Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi, are you online to give your report? We are ready to hear your report.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Should be your Vice Chair, Yasiya and committee members. I apologize for the delay. We had some technical issues on our side here at the council chambers. So I'm going to do my best to provide the report today in terms of where we're at with the Navajo Nation Missing and Murdered and their relatives crisis. What I would like to do is ask our Legislative Council, Ms. Henderson, if you can forward the working document that you have created regarding to the Navajo Nation establishment of the Missing and Murdered and their Relatives Task Force. This will be critical for the committee to receive a highlighted summary of the intent of establishing the task force, where we're at when it comes to the national tribal and state conversation and how we can collaborate with the Law and Order Committee to fully understand the crisis that is happening in our communities. So I appreciate the committee deferring the report as we had to try to address some of our technical issues. Right now, Vice Chair Yasi, what I wanted to present is a background history in terms of how we've come to this point with the task force and to recognize that this is a crisis and that means it has been an ongoing perpetual issue in Indian country and on Navajo Nation. From the early records, as early as first contact with colonizers, with different peoples, our Navajo women and children have always been targeted and taken. And we hear that through our clan histories, through our community stories and looking at that, how that has impacted families. When we look at the archives of the Long Walk, we hear of stories of our children being plucked from, from their mothers, from their fathers. We hear of stories of our relatives being captured and taken to Santa Fe in those territories to either be servants and never to return back home to Navajo Nation. This has been documented in our Navajo Nation Council Archives as early as the 1950s when delegates on the floor expressed their family histories and how they have lost relatives throughout the generations. While we conducted our community forum through the Missing and Murdered and their Relative Collective, I want to first state that this has been a community-based, survivor-based, family-based initiative. And we're happy to report with the incorporation of this task force. It'll be the first time that we'll be bridging the families and survivors with Navajo Nation programs in an official capacity. So what I just want to make sure that you received the establishing legislation. And as we go into the history, I want to for the record that in 2016, when we lost Ash and Mike, 12 years old, abducted while she was playing near her home with her brother Ian, the family, her mother Pamela Foster and Gary Mike had a very hard, hard conversation with Navajo, Navajo Nation leadership at the time. They had a conversation with law enforcement and with the Amber Alert. And with that kind of sparked the families to start speaking up on what is happening in their homes and in their communities. And it was at that time, radio announcers began to ask if anyone had seen a missing relative. And at that time in 2016, there wasn't a proper protocol or process here on the Navajo Nation on how families would report. There was a lot of misinformation in terms of how long you would have to wait to report, if the individual would be considered missing, and of course, a lot of the jurisdictional issues. And happy to report with having a lot of hard conversations with not only Navajo Nation Police Department, Navajo Nation Criminal Investigators and our surrounding law enforcement that they last year were able to create that tribal community response plan. And so I appreciate Chief Dean and his team working on that. So that has been one of the efforts in this collective that we've been able to help not only the families understand if there's jurisdiction issues or what is the process when the, when a relative is missing, but that they can go back to that plan and have that communication. Other areas that we focused in on was the victim blaming and shaming, where families were silent because they, their relative who was missing may have had either a substance abuse, may have been a victim of domestic violence, may have been, I'm sorry, I think on my end I lost the call.
We can still hear you.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just continue on. And so with the victim blaming and a lot of the relatives that were missing at the time were also survivors of interpersonal violence. And, and so the families didn't feel that they had the type of support that they needed not only to report a missing relative, but then were left to search on their own, make flyers on their own. And so there was a group of volunteers. The Navajo Missing Persons Update is an all volunteer group who started a Facebook page and began helping families understand what it takes to, to have a search, what it takes to post your missing loved one and just provided that support. And so with that in mind, we came together and had a collective conversation. And it's great to report now that Navajo Nation Police Department does have their unit of Missing and Murdered, I believe they call it Indigenous Persons Unit. And we look forward to continuing to enhance our services that are either program-based through Navajo Nation or community-based through like MMVR Collective, Gnesani for Justice and others who are working at the community level. In 2018, we did have to present to the Senate on Indian Affairs. And at that time, we did have the Chief FBI Criminal Investigator present to the Senate Committee and also the Bureau of Investigators, or I'm sorry, the Bureau of Indian Affairs also present to the committee. And it was disappointing because in 2018, our FBI partners felt that there was enough federal agents here on Navajo Nation and in, and in Indian country to deal with the type of violence we were seeing in our communities. And so that demonstrated a sheer lack of data, a sheer lack of communication transparency. And so we then moved forward to try to collect data here on Navajo Nation. And then, and on the Navajo Nation side, what was reported back to the delegates was that there was only seven missing persons. We now know that that number was extremely low. And working and communicating not only with the families, but with the different federal programs and, and having NTIC, oh, hold on, I, I need to ask these individuals to be quiet here. Hold on. Okay, I apologize for that. So we were able then to work with the federal entities like NAMIS. So from 2018, they were able to implement a tribal affiliation. And so we were, that was the beginning point of having either federal programs be able to identify how many missing Native Americans were out there in, in the country. And so they, there's a lot of discussion and they're still building up their database. But at this point, and from those discussions, we now have a monthly report from FBI that covers all of Navajo Nation and the state of New Mexico. And so what I wanted to just give the committee is a high-level summary of what we've been able to do as council delegates and Navajo Nation leadership, attending not only the Senate hearings, attending tribal consultations to talk to AUSA, the Attorney General's Office, and ask them how many cases of have resulted from initially a missing, a missing person, looking at how we could build up our relationship with our city of Gallup, where it has a high number of missing and murdered individuals, looking at our federal government, how they could have a response and provide additional support. Because there was some cultural challenges where mainstream law enforcement believes an individual after the age of 18 has a right not to be found or has a right not to communicate and to give a wellness update. But we do have Navajo Nation case law that states there's a clan responsibility to each other and to the family to let, where, to let the others know where you're at. And when there is a dramatic change in behavior or if the individual is not responding to, maybe it was texts, maybe they would come home once a month, maybe they would be on social media, that that, that the family should have the opportunity to report that individual missing. And now we're at the point where working with law enforcement and understanding the dynamics, they now take that report and we no longer have to wait a few hours or we no longer have to present. they now take that um report and we no longer have to wait a few hours or we no longer have to present some type of evidence that um this person, that there may be a crime committed. The last thing that I wanted to touch upon, um as this is the first of many discussions regarding the crisis, is um understanding that this has always been family-centered, survivor-centered. And it was really the bravery of the families to start speaking out. And so we do have um and went to have uh public forums starting in Shiprock where we heard from the families who were searching uh for their loved ones. We had a a forum in Gallup where we really focused on the experience of Navajo veterans who um went missing in um in the city of Gallup but were never reported and um no one uh knows their whereabouts. We had a public forum in Flagstaff to be able to talk to Coquettino County uh sheriffs who had um and the city of Flagstaff who had on their website like a protocol when there's a missing person. And then we went to Tuba City to really focus on what is our Navajo um male experience. Because the reason why we called it uh Missing and Murdered in that relative is we knew from from who, what families we helped, that there was a higher percentage of our Navajo men who were missing. And so although the national conversation were Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, we knew here in our home territory, um we needed to understand the dynamic of why our men were um at such a high rate of being missing and when they were found um a victim of a violent crime. Uh, so um with that in mind, we ended our public forums in Blanding, Utah and did find that there needs to be a lot of conversation. And this is where we'll need the help of the committee is how do we enter into these partnerships? And if San Juan County, Utah is ready to respond. Um, it it sounded like from that forum, there needs to be more discussion and that was roughly five months ago. So there may have been more discussion in terms of how Navajo Nation um law enforcement would reach out to the county to ask for assistance uh so that we can uh make sure that we're providing uh the public safety. The last thing I want to touch upon and why this issue is so complicated, it's interwoven into every dynamic and facet of our Navajo lives. It it impacts the children of the missing who are trying to navigate their school system. It affects uh the families, the mothers, the fathers. Um, they don't know where to go and need that critical uh mental health wraparound service. Uh, it also includes um a lot of trauma-informed training uh so that we can help um the families navigate this critical place. It also touches upon emergency management um in terms of the searches, the capacity and what we can do to enhance technology uh to help support Navajo Nation law enforcement who are who are out there searching. We do have nonprofits who have started now and they're out there, Navajo, uh Woman Red and they have a K nine unit, uh Four Corners K nine unit, and they've been to deploy to a few cases. And then we have Tara Weeks and she's based out of Phoenix, but she'll come on up and help us with the western side. Um, and so I think that's why this task force is critical uh to continue to have this dialogue. And in terms of funding, it is um, we never received funding from the federal government or state government or Navajo Nation to um address the crisis of our missing and murdered. And it was uh just recently in twenty twenty-two, the Federal Office of Victims of Crime finally allowed part of their tribal set aside funding to help um families of our missing and murdered. And so I want to thank the committee for the time on this report. Um, all of our uh Navajo Nation employees who are invested in understanding this complicated issue and um building up collaboration uh with one another and understanding uh, you know, the system is set up for us to fail and the system was set up to dehumanize our experience. But I think collectively, we're working towards how we can provide support for the families. Um, and so I think this task force um with the amount of individuals that have been selected will continue to do the work. I didn't say the last thing, but I I forgot I had to mention to the committee, I sit on the federal uh Committee Not Invisible Act. This is uh Secretary uh Deb Holland from the Department of Interior, her federal commission. And we will be coming to Navajo Nation, we'll be hosting the commission May ninth through eleventh. So I wanted to extend an invitation to the Law and Order Committee. I can um provide you updates on the type of work. Um, uh, the the white paper and the type of questions we're asking. Uh, I chair the subcommittee number one which deals with law and law enforcement and resources. So this is a critical time for us to be able to present what we need from our federal partners and um how to address not only the crisis of our missing and murdered, but the violence in our communities. How do we do the prevention work? And when there's an incident, how do we provide wraparound service? So uh Vice Chair Yasi, I appreciate uh the time and I'll yield the floor back to the committee. And I hope you receive that document and um willing to collaborate and I could provide um additional reports so that we could get a comprehensive view of what's happening here and how we could support our community members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Crati. Do we have a motion to accept the report? Thank you, Honorable Arviso. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, is there any questions at this time? No questions? Any questions, Honorable Daniels on the line?
Just a comment.
Okay.
Honorable Crati, this is a tremendous amount of work and I could see that it covers just a broad spectrum of of um missing individuals from the women, the children, and now you mentioned the men. Um, I do support all of this and I would like to get that information regarding the conference that or the, I'm sorry, the hearing session you're gonna have in May. I I I do appreciate this report of the paperwork you provided. And um I'll be interested in going through a lot of this stuff a little more and maybe talking to you about this, these issues and stuff a little later in time. Thank you for your report.
All right. Uh, thank you as well. Please thank the individuals who worked very hard on this for the many years. Um, it's really good to see that, you know, we're able to address this at our council level and with legislation. We do appreciate it. So no other questions at this time? Thank you. And we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Thank you.
Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
Hmm, green.
Thank you, Honorable Stephen Arviso votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels, dinner, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Herman Daniels, dinner, votes green. Honorable Nathan Noto, how do you vote?
Uh, green.
Thank you, Honorable Nathan Noto votes green. Honorable U. Green, Charles Newton, how do you vote? Honorable, we can hear Charles Newton, but it's smooth. Honorable Vice Chair, fairly positive, we have three in favor. They're opposed to not voting. Honorable Vice Chair, fairly not voting. Honorable man, for the new president, it's smooth.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item C. Um, Ethics and Rules has brought a report to us that we requested at the last last month meeting, I believe. Uh, thank you and I'll go ahead and give you the floor.
Good morning, Vice Chair, committee members. So um again, uh you know Harrison, interim executive director of Ethics and Rules Office, Senator Januslaw, Nakai Dene, Bushis Chin, Ishiash, Shady, Senator Bisneation, remember? Uh, so the last time you guys all met over at the Espano Chamber of Commerce uh was uh after I given my report, it was requested that I give a a list to the committee on outstanding restitutions. So the one things that are not included in this restitution are people that have already paid their restitution in full and have served their uh five years of not being able to be either employed or elected uh with the Navajo Nation. So there, this doesn't constitute the whole, all of our cases that we have. So we do have people that we have filed on and they have been compliant and they have paid their restitution in full. Uh, also, we did have four uh hearings on school board members uh last week. So the the two that were found in violation aren't included in this list. And they owe a restitution also and then two were continued to the second week of April for their cases coming up. So we still, I know we still have many cases pending that uh we're going to be, that we filed on and are coming up for hearings. It was mentioned at the time, um of people who haven't been paying their restitution. And I was telling the committee that these, some of these restitutions go way back to the end of the nineties, early two thousands. And some people have passed since. Uh, these have, so I've I have included just to show the committee that um these people were found in violation and the the restitutions would have to be written off. Um, and that was part of what was in my quarterly report of which was for the Navajo Nation misappropriated. And the second part of the restitution is people that still owe and but are actively continuing to pay the Navajo Nation back. They're in good standing with our office and the as far as getting their restitutions paid back to the Navajo Nation. And so the third category I um submitted to the committee is um people that owe the Navajo Nation but haven't paid uh anything or haven't paid in a long time. And we've had um order to show causes on these individuals, asking them why uh they haven't paid. So our discussion at that time during the meeting is to get with the committee, have a work session, come up with ways that maybe we, the committee and other entities, whether it be elections, Office of Hearing Appeals, come up with other ways that we can either change our rules, uh give a little more uh some authority to Office of Hearing Appeals, um how we can maybe um work with the prosecutor's office to try to get these things uh paid. And possibly we have already started working on amendments to the code. So those are things that I want to present to the committee once we do have a uh um a work session. And then so this is for your information purposes, uh I submit to you um and and want to continue to work to find ways that we can get these things paid to the Navajo Nation and then um have that work session soon. So that was the extent of my uh report to the to the committee um from for your request that you had requested this office to provide to the committee. So you have any questions? Be available to answer any of those.
Okay. Um, before we do Q and A, do we get a motion in a second?
I'll make the one.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Arviso.
All second.
Okay, are there any questions at this time? About the report? Okay, go ahead. Do you have the floor?
Uh, Mr. Harrison, thank you for your time and and all this uh information that you provided us in journey. So you said that uh, don't die laggy, haven't paid in a long time. You started to do uh patient to show cars. How long does that, how long is that process?
We do have a hearing officer that comes out of uh Denver. He's contracted to hear just specifically ethics cases. So it's it's a fairly quick process. I mean, let's see uh once we identify and put our motions for hearings on some of these people that haven't paid restitutions a long time, some of these people that haven't paid restitutions in a long time, uh because of we've stretched our authority as far as we could stretch it. I mean, there's a lot of stuff we still, we can't go beyond and go into criminal, cause our number, our office's administrative function. Um, they have gone or and renewed their agreement with the Ethics and Rules Office, the Navajo Nation. They've gone before this hearing by uh hearing body, maybe three or four times. Then finally, the hearing officer will put an order out saying, you need to go and take this either to district court or somewhere else. And we haven't tested those waters yet and submitted uh and filed anything with district court to try to recoup some of these. And as if you, as you can see, some of these are two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand dollars of misappropriated funds. And I was, I was telling the committee uh during my report beforehand, I don't think this office was ever structured to handle this amount of money of misappropriated funds. It was, I think, structured mainly for um standards of conduct of how our elected officials conduct themselves and money and property not amounting to this amount, um this amount. But now, a lot of programs, organizations, schools receiving millions of dollars and are easy accessible at the local level. And so a lot of people are uh getting creative in the way that they uh misappropriate and get these monies. So we're, we're constantly having to uh be catch up and then go after these individuals, hold them responsible. And we definitely um want to continue to work with some of these. Uh, I believe two of these cases I didn't uh note notated in here uh have been also filed with the federal government. But the FBI has taken over or either the United States Inspector General's taken over and also filed on them. And so we want to continue to work with uh the IRS Inspector General's Office, the FBI, and of course, our prosecutor's office here with the uh Navajo Nation to try to hold these people accountable.
Any other comments?
The um, Madam
Go ahead.
Chair, um the probation period for uh running for office or holding a position within the tribe, when does that start? Uh, does that start after they paid this off or when the decree is made, the decree?
So when the, when they're found in violation of the law, the uh hearing officer will 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 specifically say either that that um five year or the violation will start that day uh once he finds them in violation of the ethics law, or it'll start until then an official order is put out. So in this case, with those school board officials that we filed on last, last week that we had a hearing on, the order came out um just just today. And so there, and in that order does say that uh violations will start from here today. This way, so the five-year period and um the sanctions would start from today to five years. But we did also add a language in there that says, and until restitution is paid. So some of these people that owe over a hundred thousand dollars, um if they still haven't paid up, but within that five years, they're still ineligible.
Okay.
We either repay or, so now this is just, this also comes to a um we're also, because we're trying to recoup some of this restitution, we've also people that maybe still owe, I hate to say this is a little bit of amount, but like two thousand on down. And then they're, they haven't paid, but they want to go back to work. And if someone's willing to hire them and and then they, then we're willing to go into another agreement and say, well, you'll be eligible even though the first order says you're not eligible to work for the Navajo Nation. You will be eligible, you won't be eligible for an elected position, but you'll be eligible to work for the Navajo Nation. But there's got to be a payroll deduction until, so we can go toward this um restitution that you need to pay back to the Navajo Nation. Uh, in the past, the committee's also offered people community services. If you would go to corrections or you go to your local veterans organization or to your chapter and you go and work it off that way. I mean, I know that And you go and work it off that way. I mean, I know that that has been one option in the past that we've. That the committee and have given these uh individuals that owe low amounts of money back to the Navajo Nation to try to get them. Something get get paid or services done for the Navajo Nation.
So you had said we, our next steps after this would be to set up a work session and then possibly change legislation. What is that timeline?
You know what? I really did want, I really talking to the committee uh. On March first, I want to establish something in April. This is coming month, but it seemed like, well, your next, we got your springs and spring session. Your spring session, I noticed that you guys have another meeting. So I want to work with the committee. Uh, start communications, get possible dates together, and then as soon as we can confirm a date. And I can invite the other uh like elections office. See what even with the elections office, if you've been found in violations of ethics. Uh, you've been found of a violation of ethics, you're ineligible to run. You know, it states that in qualifications for and maintaining qualifications under the elections law. So you work with them at that time when they. Changed that before, it used to only apply to school board members. But uh since they had changed that legislation, it's across the board now that if you've been found in violation. And then you're you're ineligible, they'll remove you from office. See, because right now you have other people that hold. Multiple elective positions, they could be a school board official and a chapter official. You know, so uh that so that would make it to where it applies across the board that you're ineligible for all elected positions. So. So I want to keep that communications with the committee and maybe uh give uh get give me possible dates. And then once, because I'd like to have the 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 whole committee there and put their input in there. I believe like uh the chair was saying last time we make work sessions and and. Nobody shows up and then when it goes to the floor and then they want more work sessions or they want to, well, I don't understand this type thing, you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I mean, I'm I'm, I know I got you you all's support and changing this and strengthening this.
Yeah.
And so.
I agree.
I definitely want to uh get that together so I can then invite um. The hearing officer that comes in from Denver, the Office of Hearing Appeals where we go before. And the uh maybe even the prosecutor's office and the elections office, everybody that would be. Uh, involved in this change of legislation.
Yeah.
Again, another question, the section where you have haven't paid in a long time. That list is pretty extensive. Um, are you aware of any of these people working now or or holding an office with the tribe?
No, we've we continually, we get um, we get a list quarterly of uh. Employees that are working for Navajo Nation.
Right.
So we go and we type in their names and see if they pop up anywhere. You know, now that we have a new administration, we have uh new people working for the Navajo Nation. You know, we'd like to type in those those uh names and make sure that they don't owe the Navajo Nation. I know there was some questions on some people and some people's name did pop up, but then we looked and say, well. They don't owe restitution anymore. They did get found a violation in the past, but they did their five years. They. They paid their restitution, so they're eligible to either be politically appointed or employed or run for office again. So that's uh that's some of the stuff that we were working on just during this new election period. Uh, so, but yeah, we we constantly trying to look for a lot of these people and trying to keep track of them. Uh, seeing if they do, I mean, a lot of these people, they um, they uh, they're like, well. Um, I just, they retire something that just like, well, I'll just live on my social security and. And don't, don't, don't pay at all. So it's just tough for us and a lot of these people that uh, and that's what we're talking about. Practicing and exercising that garnishment law that's afforded to us. Uh, we need to, because I do know that there are some people that work like in Phoenix.
Yeah.
And they work like in Denver, they moved off to uh. They they moved out of the area and we want to try to file and see if they'll recognize. Uh, that our our order here with the Navajo Nation outside the reservation is. Need to domesticate that with that state or that city or, and if they're willing to recognize Navajo Nation order. Uh, there, so. That's something I'm uh wanting to get done.
Go ahead.
Um, you've heard me say this before, Mr. Harrison, um. And I probably gonna need your help in doing. Maybe a legislation in the future as to uh, how do we, how would we begin to start? Focusing, because our 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 communities, they're the ones that are impacted by people that do this. And they they really want justice. And I know your your department's doing what it can and and they don't understand that, but. They want to see longer, like maybe that indefinite. That you don't come back, but I know it's a little hard. To impose such a law. They want to, they they don't want. They don't want folks that do this to come back to do the same positions. They they don't want to see him in there. I mean, that's probably something that. We're gonna have to get creative on without really, you know, at first, when I first became a delegate, that was one of. First thing that I'd like to see happen, but I I understand, I'm beginning to understand the legalities of the whole. Uh, Ethics and Rules Committee, so. So it's a little difficult. It's not as, it's easier said than done. So um. I'd like to see something like that. I mean, somewhere, somehow, there's got to be answers for these people that want. They want justice in a form of, don't, don't let them do it again, because I know a couple of people in here that jump from chapter to chapter. And still did the same thing within within three months. And um, how how does, I mean. People want to know, how does that happen? How does that, like, you know, one takes from this chapter and then. Couple of weeks later, they're working with another chapter and does the same thing. That I guess the communication is slow or the hiring is. I don't, I don't know the, I don't know how it, how it happens.
Yeah, I I think with um, when we switched over from our Ethics and Rules Committee to Office of Hearing Appeals. We used to have an Office of Ethics and Rules Committee. They would stick to just the five years. Whether they paid their restitution in full or not, it was a straight five years. Uh, or they would still be under investigation and then they would leave that chapter that they're being investigated in. And they would be reassigned to another chapter and start that process all over again, you know, and so it kind of like when we, when we got them. When we got them here at this chapter, then we come to find out they're doing it at another chapter, but not even chapters, I mean, even like programs, right? Where it's like this person worked at this program. And they knew something was coming down and all of a sudden they switched over and they're working for another program again, you know, so. That's where we we end up playing pain, playing catch up. Uh, with these people and then we find them in violations of multiple areas, you know. So, yeah, I mean, and then your your comment about restricting them to. You know, not be able to run for public office for, I think that would be some discussion we would need to have with legislative council. I don't think it's impossible or it can't be done, you know, but there, because I know like with um. Elections and it kind of constitutes the same thing with elections. If you recall, you then you can't run for a period of eight years. Which is constitutes like two terms. And even though ours is five years, that kind of constitutes two terms also. So, um, that's probably, yeah, we definitely need to sit down and talk with. And uh legislative council, and if that can be done, you know, I'm I'm all for that also. I mean, even with um elections and how we're doing it, um. As long as you haven't been convicted of felony in the last five years, you're okay to run, you know, I mean, that's. Into state level and stuff like that, it's not. And I know that uh, I think it was like late two thousands, they tried, I know with our. Uh, former chair Francis Redhouse, he tried to uh change that legislation to where, well. We should take that five years off and say, if you're convicted of a felony, then you can't run at all. And then went down to the was, got legislation done, went to the council floor and council voted it down. And they said, leave it like that. So, I mean, there have been times that, uh, you know, we tried to change and. It's just uh educating our legislators and then letting her know, well, this is the best thing for the Navajo Nation as a whole. And hopefully uh we can get a a positive outcome, but um. Trying to get restitution back and then preventing people from recycling in the system. If that's what we we want to try to do, we can try to change that. Right now, that what we did, we're just add that language with Office of Hearing Appeals say, and the restitution is paid. And so these people that owe fifty thousand, a hundred thousand on up. It's highly likely they're gonna not be able to pay. So they they already know they're not eligible to be employed or. Run for office until that restitution is paid in full.
I like that. I like that. I like it. Or until restitution.
Yeah, I think so.
Takes takes care of the not to run again.
Yeah.
And then I think that language there needs to be enforced a little bit more. Does um, election office get this list?
Yes, uh. Personnel, Department of Personnel, uh it's a uh the final or, not the list. They just get the, like, once we've adjudicated these and all these cases have been adjudicated. They've gone through the process. These are all public record. Um, so once the final order is uh set out. Like today with the ones with the school board members, we will be giving a copy to Elections Office. For uh Department of Personnel and then the affected entities, like if it's a school board and then they hold a. Like in a position or they they're uh employed with the Navajo Nation and those uh affected entities get copies of those also. So uh those are departments that all get copies. Uh, if it involves like um. A school board, D O E will get a copy also, so they'll have that for their records. If it involves a chapter, Division of Community Development will get a copy also. For their records and how they uh maintain and document it. I don't know, but they do get a copy of of uh what was ordered by. Uh, that they did find find them in violation of ethics laws and they were removed from office and stuff.
Okay.
Uh, we, yeah, uh, we do have um Chair Charles Newton on the line. She has a question. Go ahead. You have the floor. Madam Chair, are you on the line? You can ask your question. Well, she's not on. Yeah.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just have one question in regards to um judgments. And um credit reporting um institutions. So like the credit reporting agencies um in state. You will get uh a copy of the judgments and that are attached to credit reports. And I was just wondering if there is a similar thing that is provided to credit agencies. Um, from this office so that these judgments are actually seen on credit reports.
We have not. Uh, that is something that's been discussed when um we did have an Ethics and Rules Committee. I know that um Mr. Haven at the time was the attorney for our committee. And he did structure some legislation with like that and then also trying to sell these. Uh, restitution amounts to credit creditors that will buy them and then try and give them. I think like fifty or sixty cents to the dollar and then let them worry about trying to collect as long as that one nation gets their money. But for some reason that was shut down, uh, but I know that we we still have that legislation. Uh, but we can, during that work session, reintroduce, let you guys look at that. And if it's something we can go forward and maybe expand on, we can do all that also.
And I think Chair Newton, Charles Newton is on the line. Okay. Any other questions? Good. All right. So I guess the next step for us will be to find some time to schedule a work session with all of the. Um, departments that you mentioned and you want to try to do it before or sometime in April.
April or maybe early May or something like sometime soon so we can uh, yeah, get that discussion and then. Get something going, get the wheels rolling anyway.
Mm-hmm. I think I would like that because I know right now, you know, I want to have faith and believe that people. Um, are gonna do good with money that we receive, especially like with the ARCA money. It's a lot of money. And how I'm understanding is there is a lot of confusion still on like how we process payments. How we're gonna, you know, um, purchase, you know, things for our communities and I just want to. Make sure that, you know, nobody gets in trouble with spending money that they're not supposed to spend. But I mean, just having a legislation that we would put together. You know, would also help people to think twice about it and say, oh, okay. So that would be good to really try to work on it right away.
Uh, just just for uh to add on to that thing, and since it's already been adjudicated, there's been an order put out today. Um, the two cases that we had last week uh involved misappropriation of ARCA funds.
Already. Go ahead.
Um, these ARCA monies is a, it's a huge, huge amount of money. We're probably not gonna get this kind of money again. And I keep saying that to everybody, not ever. Um, is there, we should, not is there, we should be doing a public service announcement. To let people know that. The chapter uh people and then also even the officials and the the staff. They should keep an eye on each other to ensure that this does not happen with those ARCA funds. I'm really afraid that it's gonna take place. I'm really afraid that we're gonna have a lot of misappropriation of funds, taking of monies. Um, do, does your department have any funding to be able to do like public service announcements on the radio? Or or we, I, we really need to get that information out. We we can't just let this go like this. I don't think, not with the ARCA funds. We need to specifically address that.
Yeah. Not with our office, we don't have any kind of broadcasting or any any um budget, anything budgeted for that. But uh we do, we are doing as many presentations as we can. Um. This week we got, I, I'm gonna be doing a presentation for a school board conference that they're having in um. Albuquerque uh Wednesday, and it's Wednesday and Thursday. I'm gonna do the one Wednesday and I have another investigator doing the one Thursday, because I'll be doing. Uh, a presentation for the Board of Supervisors, Election Supervisors, Ethics Presentation for them Thursday here. And so we're getting more and more requests to do presentations. And some of these uh cases that have been adjudicated, I use, I reference as examples. And so, you know, I definitely do know that that our funds already, when we filed on these individuals. Concerning our funds, we're already getting a lot of feedback. Well, so I'm thinking it's gonna be like a snowball effect.
Yeah.
Lot of people that, oh, they, I didn't know you could do, you couldn't do that. Now I'm gonna, I need a file on these people.
And the other thing to emphasize in this, these are federal monies. So it's not like tribal money I'm thinking, where you're just gonna get away with it. This is federal dollars and the repercussions are gonna be much more stringent, I would hope. To where, you know, that can be turned over to federal prosecutors and they can take their deal. And just putting that information into these um, these educational programs, so these are federal dollars. And you're gonna be, you know, held accountable by feds.
Right.
And it's gonna, it's not, there's gonna be no, you know, um, what do you call, um, uh, you know, trying to ask for. Leniency and that type of stuff and, you know, just saying on these announcements, saying that you're probably not gonna get any leniency. So I I don't know, I that that's, that's something I think we need to do. I don't know. So I, I, I don't know. I, that, that's, that's something I think we need to do. I don't know. I don't know who would be responsible or who could pay for something like that, but um, like you said, the snowballing effect is gonna affect, you know, it's much more work for you guys. And this is gonna be a mess.
You know, like I was telling the committee, uh, the first, I mean, we're going after these uh, violations. I mean, they are ethics violations on how it's interpreted in a Title II under the ethics laws. But yeah, there are other people that probably should be going after these. And a lot of people, uh, they, they forget that we're an administrative and, uh, department.
Yeah.
A lot of people, they come back at us and say, well, how come he's not in jail? How come he's, you know, how come that? And even during the budget sessions, we got questioned about, what are you, I can't even, you guys ain't doing nothing to try to get these restitutions and, you know.
Yeah. Not really your role.
Yeah, like they, they only give us so much authority to try to recoup this money. And that's why I'm anxious and, uh, excited to meet with uh, the committee and figure out other ways or where you guys can help us and help the Navajo Nation to recoup some of this money. And as Mr. Arviso was saying, and get creative in the ways that we can and maybe with consultation with legislative council and see how far that the law would be able to let us go.
I know one of the things that you're asking about is like campaigns or public service announcement. Um, I don't know if maybe a press release just from Law and Order Committee.
You know, that might be a good idea.
Says something, you know, that we are, you know, don't want, we want you to be um, spending this money in a fiscally responsible way. Cause that's what I've been saying to my chapters.
And I'm gonna start saying that.
Over and over. And then, um, one of the other things that I've done is, um, my, some of my chapters have gone through the ARPA. Um, you know, luckily the previous, um, delegate, he had, um, got them all through. So there's a lot of my chapters that are gonna go through this process first. So I've been asking the ARPA office to come and visit so they can ask those specific questions about, you know, how are we gonna get the money? Is the money directly coming to us? And then, um, Mr. Potero can answer that question for them. So that way if they know they're not, then they, they have more questions about, okay, well, how would I order this? Or how would we get contractors? Or how does this work and timelines? So that's something that I've been kinda doing a lot of. And again, just telling them, I don't want you to spend this money in a way that's gonna cause any problems. It is federal money. So I just being, you know, just saying over and over is something that I've been really trying to get out there.
I, um, recently saw a letter. I'm not sure who it came from, but it was to one of the chapters and there was misappropriated funds. And all the, 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 well, a couple of the chapter staff were listed in that letter. And then all the chapter officials were listed in that letter. And then the council delegate was listed in that letter. And I, that's why I'm saying, I'm gonna start saying this to my chapters because I don't want any part of that stuff. And I don't want anything like that with my name in a letter like that. I have never as a, I have never as a person been, you know, done anything like that. And I have gone through tremendous amount of audits. And I, you know, I just, it's crazy to, you know, when I don't have anything to do with the chapter officially for something like that to happen and that goes out. My name goes, uh, that is, that's just not right. It's not cool. And, and I'm concerned about that because, uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want that stuff out there with me having something to do with that chapter. So that's why I'm saying that I think it's important for us to to, um, make sure that they, they know that, um, not to do that. That's, yeah.
Well, I know with like, um, a lot of federal grants, it's kinda like you're if, if you're dinged on that, right? And then everybody else will know. About it. I guess they'll, you know, even with grants, they share information like that. You know, be careful. So and so does this. I don't know. I mean, that's what I've heard in the past. I agree with you. I wouldn't want my name at just something like that.
And, and I, I know the delegate, I surely he wasn't part of it. You know, but yet his name is all over that, all, all over that letter. So I don't know. Yeah, that's, that's, we'll have to see how that unfolds.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. I would try to ask, um, Chair, if she had a question, she could text it, but I think she probably gone back into the meeting. So we'll go ahead and move on then. Nothing else? We'll call for a vote.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, this is Daniel.
Okay. Go ahead, Honorable Daniels.
Um, I, I'm listening to the conversation. I was gonna raise a point of order. Um, Vice Chair, can we use the, the council rules of order? So, um, what I mean by council rules, rules of order. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Or maybe for a vote.
Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stephen Arviso votes green. Honorable Nathan Noto, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Nathan Noto votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels Jr., how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Herman Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Eugenia Charles Lewis, how do you vote? Honorable Eugenia Charles Lewis is excused with that, Honorable Vice Chair. For the last we have three favors, zero opposed to not voting, Honorable Madam Vice Chair. Sharon Yasi not voting and Honorable Eugenia Charles Lewis is excused. For sure.
All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to seven new business. A, um, approve a joint meeting between LOC and um, Hesse on Monday, April third at ten AM at Navajo Nation Council Chambers in Windrock, Arizona. It'll be teleconference and in person. And we just need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Thank you. Honorable Noto. Second.
Thank you, Daniel.
Honorable Arviso, do we have any questions on this? Take out your calendars and we're all good?
Yeah.
No questions? Honorable Daniels, do you have any questions on this? Okay, not hearing anything. We'll go ahead and proceed to vote.
Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stephen Arviso votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels Jr. having vote. Honorable Nathan Noto, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Nathan Noto votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels Jr. having vote. Honorable Eugenia Charles Lewis, how do you vote? With that, Honorable Vice Chair, Madam Pearl Yasi, you have two favors, zero opposed. They not voting. Honorable Herman Daniels Jr. not voting. Honorable Eugenia Charles Lewis is excused. Honorable Madam Vice Chair Sharon Yasi not voting. Vice Chair.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to B. Uh, approve Law and Order Committee Special Meeting on Friday, April seventh at ten AM. Um, at the Law and Order Conference Room here in Windrock. And you'll, we'll be covering the six thirty eight contracts and that will be available teleconference or in person. Can we get a motion and a second?
Oh, motion.
Thank you, Honorable Arviso.
We have to do a second before we do discussion, right? I'll second it.
Thank you, Honorable Noto. All right. We can open this up for discussion, questions?
Yeah, the, uh, oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, my, uh, district is really, uh, uh, big on veterans. We have a agency veterans meeting that day at ten AM at Cornfields. So that's gonna conflict with, with this particular meeting. And, um, the last meeting that they had, I was asked to present at this, uh, veterans, uh, veterans meeting in Cornfields for the agency, um, that's my dilemma.
Okay. Um, I, I too have, um, something scheduled for that day. So I don't think I would be able to make it, not unless I'm listening online, but it would be hard to do two things at once.
It's gonna be, that's I do it all the time.
I also, um, have something that day and would really like to participate in this discussion. Um, if it is gonna lead to perhaps changes in or legislation requests. Um, and I, I think, um, there was, uh, an email that went out about that. Um, so either my proposal may be for next, that Monday after, or make it part of the report. I'm not sure. Then you make it just a, um, a report on the tenth for that next week. And or, um, anytime that probably we make it, we'd be fine to, um, perhaps just make it into a report. Um, and not not sure how much time we're gonna need. Um, but I believe there's, um, sorry, um, how many people would we be inviting to your reports? I, I gave a suggestion uh, to the committee, um, to invite DOJ, O N B, um, and, and uh, to make a request to them to see who would be presenting and how much time we would need. Um, so it might be something that can be done, um, as a report during a regular, uh, Law and Order Committee, uh, meeting, um, if they, if you don't want to, um, take an additional day to have a work session. Thanks.
So this was scheduled by Madam Chair. I think what you want to do is to let all the the people that are involved, I think she wants to meet with them. Like O N B, DOJ, um, legislative council and all that work with, um, like controller. I think she wants to all put it in one room and one day. Um, for a report like what, um, Ms. Henderson was talking about. I think that can be done and in the report on Monday on the tenth.
Yeah, that would work with me. I'm okay with putting it all on the tenth.
I'm good with that.
Honorable Daniels, did you hear the discussion? Are you online? Maybe he lost signal. I'm not sure. Okay, so do we just make a motion to change? Okay, yeah. So we just need a motion to uh, move that to a regular LOC meeting on the tenth. A motion and a second.
You already have a motion for this one on the floor.
Oh.
And you have a second for this, this particular item. So how do we change it? There's already a motion, a motion for this day. Second by delegate Noto for this thing, for this, for this item B. Now we're asking to change the, the date on it from the seventh to the tenth. Is, would I, would I just change, modify my, my motion to this?
Yeah.
Ten rather than the seven.
Yeah.
Then I will do so, Madam Chair. Is modify my motion on item B from April seventh to April tenth.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. Okay, so motion has been made to modify the the LOC special meeting from April seventh to April tenth. And that would be to hear um, on track, six thirty eight contracts.
My, my Vice Chair, uh, I might add, let's check with ma- madam chair and uh, delegate Daniels. It is a regular LOC show. They should be available. So tha- that's all I'm worried about. Cause sometimes you get yourself in a position where we're making the decision, but we're leaving out the two. Maybe they had a different idea of getting people together separately or that's all I'm worried about. Um, cause this is, I, I, I think we asked for this special meeting to only get a group of people together. Only that group of people. Now, we don't know who else is gonna do a report on that day outside the group, selected group. Do we want them to be part of this discussion is what I'm worried about. So I think I think we need to run it by Chair and Delegate Daniels before before we make this final. That's what I'm worried about. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, just a suggestion, um, because, uh, you're going to move it to a regular report. It does not need to be voted on. Um, however, this special meeting can be tabled until next, um, the next agenda. So if you want to discuss this in the interim, this can be just replaced on the agenda as, um, something, uh, because you need to vote on this special meeting. However, you do not need to vote on a regular agenda item. You just need to add it to the next agenda and Chair or, um, the Chair coming around. So, um, you can just table it.
Yeah. So then I withdraw my motion.
So, um, if you look at your, um, so Navajo Nation Conference Spring Session begins, um, April seventeenth to the twenty first, twenty twenty three. That meeting would move to April third. And how she wanted to do that, so in lieu of meeting, um, April seventh. So I, I'm not too sure if it's really up to her or you, the committee, do you want to take it to a different date? Um, that, um, special meeting in lieu of meeting.
Cause it sounded like we're having two meetings that week.
Yeah.
And I don't know what all is gonna be moved forward to the, the next agenda. Or we could just have it all just that.
Just like, um, you didn't know, um, Ms. Henderson indicated that maybe it's just a report on it first and then on the tenth, put that on the agenda.
Oh, okay. I hear what you're saying. So that would be another option. It's just to hear a report on the third, the regular LOC meeting and then then following Monday, then we're actually going to talk about it later in March.
Well, actually, the, the third is the work session.
Oh, that's gonna be a long one. Okay.
So, yeah, so it'd be potentially that you could discuss it till then and put something on the, um, the third agenda, just to vote on a special meeting. If that's what the, if that's what the discussion was, you can you probably put that as part of the agenda item after the special session. Or the joint meetings, excuse me.
Okay. So Honorable Arviso, you withdrew your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do you guys want to do?
Uh, we're meeting next Monday, right? Can we table it till then? Everybody should be here. And we'll bring it back up.
That works. Okay. Need a motion from a second to table it then?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Awesome.
All right.
Table.
The table, all right. Table, yeah, um, oh, yeah.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um and then I would just make a suggestion, just to inform, maybe um get, get a letter out to those uh areas. Just to let them know that we're, that um. Law and Order Committee is going to be requesting a uh report on this so that they can compile that information while you're deciding which they. Do have them come and present, so that way they can contact the. The employees that will be making that presentation, so the more time we give to them, um the better the presentation, I think, will be. Um so that, I mean, we can do that or for Law and Order, you can do that now and then um maybe uh invite them once they get the lead now.
Okay. All right. Would we be able to do that? All right, thank you. And then we just. Vote. On the table, on the table, to table this item.
Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stephen Arviso, votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels Jr., how do you vote?
Green, green.
Thank you, Honorable Herman Daniels Jr., votes green. Honorable Nathan Noto, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Nathan Noto, votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels, who is excused. With the honorable Madam Vice Chair, Carolyn Yasi, three favors, zero opposed, to not voting. Honorable Madam Vice Chair, Carolyn Yasi not voting, honorable Madam Chair, who is excused, Vice Chair.
All right. Thank you again, everybody. Now we're on um item eight. Close of meeting announcements and adjournment. Are there any? And now. Am I doing a vote first or do we have to do a motion? No? Your turn, just adjourn, okay, so but do we have any announcements? No? You have, Honorable Daniel?
Yes, I thank you, Vice Chair. I know that uh. This week. This week, maybe Thursday and Friday, was it Thursday, Friday that uh Malita? But I, I will be able to attend because I have other, other commitments. This week, you call, maybe you have to do that. Just wanna announce that the other day. Uh Vice Chair, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the update.
Is that gonna make it?
So. Our next.
So the, the memo was signed by speaker and your travel date starts tomorrow. And it'll be for two days, twenty-first and twenty-second, and then your return travel from the twenty-third. And then um I believe you all registered too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it, all right. Um, so the next meeting will be on March twenty-seventh, ten AM. That's a regular meeting. Um available teleconference or in person. And then we'll also have another meeting April third, also same time, ten AM. Um April tenth. Another regular meeting. Then we have Navajo Nation Council Spring Session begins April seventeenth to the twenty-first. Um. And then another LOC meeting on April twenty-fourth, and those are the only announcements that I have. Anything else? Nothing? Okay, well, let's call for a motion to adjourn, close the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, let's go and pop our vote. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Stephen Arviso, votes green. Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Eugenia Charles. Honorable Madam Vice Chair, Carolyn Yasi, three favors, zero opposed, to not voting, Honorable Madam Vice Chair, Carolyn Yasi not voting. And honorable Madam Chair, who is excused.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming in today and we adjourn at twelve twenty-fourth. Have a wonderful, wonderful rest of your day, everybody. Thank you for tuning in online.